Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome. Today is Wednesday, October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. We are gathered for an afternoon work session to receive a quarterly update on our two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-eight strategic plan. My name is John Kofalas, Commissioner from District One, joined by my colleagues, Kristen Stevens from District Two, and Jody Shadak McNally from District Three. Across the way, we have our esteemed County, Acting County Manager, Assistant County Manager, Lori Cadrich. And Lori, is there anything you'd like to say before we turn it over to our friend Josh?
Commissioners, I would, I would just share with you in the community, is that on?
Can you hear us all, Cassidy?
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I would just share with you in the community that this is one of our first updates for the new strategic plan that runs from two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight. And so we're getting started on these goals and objectives. And one thing I'd like to highlight is that we've tried to bring in more folks from the community to assist us in carrying out the objectives for the strategic plan. So you may hear more about that later.
Thank you very much, Lori. Welcome, Josh.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Josh Fudge. I'm the county's Director of Performance, Budget, and Strategy, with overall responsibility for moving the strategic plan forward. So we're going to provide updates today on each of the four goals and all of the underlying sub-objectives, and then some other overall updates on the plan itself. As you can see, we have a lot of people here who are, who will be answering questions or speaking on their particular sub-objectives, and I'm very happy to have you all here. Thank you. So we will get started with the first goal, which is resilient, equitable, and engaged community. The first objective under that is to communicate with the public regarding our strategic plan, both prior versions and the current version. I met with our Public Affairs Director, Michelle Byrd, who is our objective team leader for this. Unfortunately, some of their work was delayed by over a month due to the Alexander Peak Fire. As you can imagine, she and others were busy communicating to the public on that. But thus far, the team has gathered data from stakeholders, both our former goal stewards and objective team leaders, and other members who put together former plans. They've identified target audiences that they want to reach about the progress that was made in those former plans and this plan. They've defined their key message, and they've reviewed those messages with stakeholders. And so the next step for this plan in the coming quarter is to choose communication channels for each audience and develop metrics, timelines, and responsibilities for how the, the communication is having an impact. Also related to this, and it's not really identified in the slide, there was a service proposal for next year's budget related to a software program that could be used to track public input. And so Michelle was the point person responsible for that request. However, she is out of the office today. But I am happy to have Rebecca Everett from our Community Development Department come and speak to you about that, that program and some of the pros of it. And so I will let her take it away.
Thank you, Josh. I'm Rebecca Everett, Community Development Director. And so as Josh teed up here, there was a request for the two thousand and twenty-five budget for a new tool to manage community engagement and public input across the county as an enterprise-wide system. And so I want to describe that tool a little bit and the goals of adopting a new system to explain a little bit behind that request. So the tool that we are, are discussing is called Public Input. That's the name of the tool. And it is a software platform that can be used to gather feedback from the community and manage and report on that feedback on all kinds of projects and topics. This is a multi-departmental effort to look at a software program that could be used by every single department and elected office in the county and could be customized for the needs of different teams. So, for example, right now, Department of Natural Resources has their own system for collecting input and engaging on special projects. That looks different than my department, Community Development, and how we engage on projects, including how we collect input on development cases. So public input would give us one single platform and tool that could be used for all county projects and initiatives. And the benefit of that is we would be looking globally at who we are engaging, how we are reaching people, avoiding some of the challenges that come with survey fatigue or engagement fatigue, because we would know who we are talking to, where, who we're hearing from. Another advantage of the public input tool is it offers equity mapping and an ability to see spatially where you are reaching people, who you are hearing from, and it allows you to target outreach activities toward areas of the community that may have disproportionately high populations of people who are experiencing poverty or may have other demographic needs. So, or demographic traits that drive the types of engagement strategy or needs that we have. So, for example, language accessibility could help us target, you know, where we might need to offer more Spanish translation or translation into other languages within our community. So there are really strong data tools within the public input platform. There is also a, an integration of some artificial intelligence tools to analyze input and feedback, which offers some efficiency for the staff who processes community input. I'll, I'll use development applications as an example. If we have a controversial case and we have received comments from a hundred different individuals around the community, that AI tool can help us generate a summary and a breakdown of that feedback. What are some of the themes that came up? What's the general sentiment in, in support or in opposition to a project? So in addition to categorizing and inventorying all the comment that, that comes in, we can also summarize and report out at a lot less effort than we are spending now as a staff. I think the la, the last thing that I will add is that we need to identify, in order to implement this system, we need to identify funding for the first three years of implementation. We already have a funding source identified for the first year of implementation. This is a conversation, a conversation that started back in two thousand and twenty-three, and we identified funding at that time, and we have re-appropriated and carried over that, that funding since then. But we're really looking for a, a multi-year commitment to get this platform off the ground. The annual cost is, I believe, roughly forty-eight thousand dollars a year. And so that's what we would be looking, looking for in terms of an ask, recognizing that there's a lot of efficiency and community benefit that could come from implementing an enterprise-wide tool like this.
Thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Josh. I, I imagine my colleagues and I have a few comments or questions regarding this tool. So let's pause and see. Commissioner Stevens, questions or comments, please?
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. I appreciate learning about that tool. One of the questions is, do we think that we will engage more and a different group of, of people with this tool? Because, or will it just be an easier way to engage with people who are already plugged in? Because I guess, you know, that's always the challenge is that are we getting to, you know, are we hearing all the voices?
Yeah.
And so can you speak to that at all, or what other communities have experienced with that?
Yes. Yeah, the goal would be to expand the reach of the county and to make it easier for people to engage with their county government. And by reducing those barriers, hopefully we are reaching more people. And so because it would be an online platform, a lot of who we hear from speaking in community development right now, a lot of who we hear from are people who receive a postcard in the mail and have the, the time and energy or motivation to write an email to their elected officials or to the staff. This, this platform allows someone to go straight to a link, look at all the development cases that might be under review or other projects, write a quick comment, submit it into a form. And so there, it's easier and faster to interact. Also, the equity mapping tool does give us the ability to specifically target and reach out to entire neighborhoods or, or community members that have previously registered. So whereas right now we may send a mailing out, we could also reach people directly through email or other, other means. And I think there's one other, there's also capability of the system to identify what they call service-based organizations, so community partners, we often call them. And we can utilize, identify where there might be community partners in certain areas of the community that we can utilize to help get the word out more too. So the goal would be to supplement and augment our, our engagement efforts.
And we'll, so that, it'll be interesting to see if that increases workload in responding to all those responses. Like, do you, do you have any sense of, like, people, you know, nor, let's say, you know, on, on a given case, you hear from ten people. Do you have any sense from other communities that might have used this, who now hear from twenty or fifty people? And then that becomes a burden, you know, or we have to look at, you know, more staffing? You know, there again, I want to hear from more people, but are we prepared for that kind of response? And do you think we'll get that kind of response from the community?
I think that's a, that's a great question, and it would be worth talking to some other communities about to see what their experience has been. I, my optimism, optimistic opinion of it is we spend so much time corresponding over directly through email with people and compiling emails and creating PDFs and putting things in packets that there would be so much time saving on, time saved on some of those things that there would be capacity to engage with additional people. So I think there are probably trade-offs that maybe are awash in the end.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I'm not poo-pooing in any kind of way, but just say, you know, saying like, oh, my gosh, be careful what you wish for, right? As more engagement means more, you know, staff time. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Shadak McNally.
Thank you. Thank you, Rebecca and team, for looking into how we can innovate and, and progress and do things in a different way. But I'm, as I'm sitting here, hearing all these wonderful new ideas and things, I'm thinking about my mother who lives in a neighboring county who turns eighty next week, who refuses to get on the internet because they got scammed the first month they got on the internet by a lot of money. So as older adults, there's still like, a lot of few people who own homes and are out there. And trust me, they're engaged. They read the newspapers, they watch TV, they're talking to their neighbors. They have lots of comments and feedback. And as we have this increasing population of older adults that are over, you know, over sixty, it's going to get up to almost thirty, you know, twenty-nine, thirty percent. I'm looking at my Office on Aging folks, that's about the number. Not all of them are tech savvy. So I'm curious. Those folks are long-term blermer residents, most of them, live in their homes, have contributed in lots of ways to the greatness of our wonderful and beautiful county. I'm just curious how we still keep some of those folks engaged.
Yeah, that, that's a great question and point. And yeah, we certainly see it in, in our office, that we interact with people who have all kinds of different level of comfort with technology. This would not replace the ability for someone to call us, and we will still pick up the phone, or to send us an email. It will give us a system, give us a system where we can take that email or that letter that got sent to us or notes from a phone call and enter it directly into one single system where it can then be compiled with the rest of the comments. So those avenues that people use to reach us, this would provide one additional avenue, but it would but it wouldn't replace the ability for someone to interact with us the way they do now.
If I might, so if, so this is great. I think it's wonderful. I think anything we can help make efficiencies for staff and for residents to engage with us, because that's, we're here to engage with them and serve our great, our wonderful county. How do we promote and make sure other folks still know this is an opportunity, there's still other ways for them to engage in these other ways? Is that still just as much advertised or shared? And I'm just curious, because, you know, I get that question sometimes. How can, can I pick up the phone and talk to a person, right? So just curious about that.
Yeah, I'll make a note of that as something that we can bring back to the team that's working on this, to make sure that that is part of the communication. I know in, just to continue using development applications as an example, when we send a postcard mailing out, there's always the name of the planner listed, and that planner's email address and phone number. And for, for our department, that wouldn't change. That would, that communication would still be out there and available. There might be an additional link of, you can also go here to comment. But I think for the broader county and other departments, that's something I could take back to the team that's working on this, to make sure that that continues to be front of mind.
That's great. And if I might, just one last thing. So we have a lot of information that we're gathering on behavioral health, older adult services, just across so many wonderful departments. You all are doing amazing, great things. And there's some wonderful information, and even with the Health Department, about, you know, marginalized communities or communities with lower health scores. And there's a lot of great data. How can we use all of that? Is there any way, you know, that's for me to bring this all together, so that maybe if we really want to hear from certain kinds of folks, their feedback on things? How can we bring this all together? Is that part of this, just to make sure, you know, everywhere, somewhere in Larimer County, and how every resident feels like they're connected, even if they live in the northwest corner of the county? Just curious. I mean, for me, you know, I'm not technically as savvy as all of you, and just, I would just love it that everyone would feel like they're connected. And so that's, that's the dream, right? And so just curious about that.
Yes, yeah. I mean, the beauty of this Public Input tool is it has a mapping spatial component to it, in addition to a way for someone to just, you know, submit comments and engage. So we can kind of track who we are hearing from, and we can load in our own data layer. So if we have a data layer for disproportionately impacted communities, or communities that experience worse health outcomes, or something like that, we can load that data in and use it to help target our programming or education outreach, things like that. The departments so far that have been participating in this conversation are Natural Resources, Office of Emergency Management, and Community Development are the, and then the Commissioner's Office, and Michelle Byrd has been taking the lead. So that, those are the departments that are kind of the early adopters and really on board with this, but we want this to be a tool that is available and ultimately adopted by every department that does community outreach.
I really appreciate all the answers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. I believe Lori has a question or a comment, and then I, I actually have a variety of questions, but I'm only going to ask two of them, a simple one and one that is a little bit more involved. Lori?
Mine may be the same as what Commissioner Shadak McNally just asked, because that's something I've noticed as I visit the departments. Everybody's gathering a specific list of people they reach out to, I think of ours, for the Community Strategic Plan Group, and then Michelle can reach back out. So those, I, if I understand, it can be loaded into the system, and we can ensure that.
Yes, yeah. And the idea would be, if somebody is on seven different email lists for the county, now we, now we have visibility into that, whereas currently, we do not.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. So my two questions for now, and I hope there'll be an opportunity, some little bit of follow-up. My easy question, I believe it's easy, and that is, can we get a demo of this software tool? And if so, you know, maybe we can schedule something in the coming weeks, or I'd like to see it in action.
Yes, we can certainly work on a demo, and perhaps one of our Monday Sipper Work sessions would be a good fit for that.
Thank you. I presume that that would be a simple question, and I believe it was. My more involved question, and then I, like I said, I have others, but I'll defer since we're only on the, not even past the first page of our presentation, and that is, how will this AI software tool help us, the commissioners, do our job?
Yeah, I think that probably remains to be seen, the AI specifically, because I haven't seen exactly what the output looks like yet, and that's something we could look at if we do a demo. We could, we could get some examples from other communities on how they're using it. But my understanding of it is that it helps distill and summarize information. So you may, when you're looking at a development application, want to read through every, every public comment and really understand where it came from and all of that. But if you've got 200 pages of comments to read through, you may also want to, when you get to the end of it, have, have some kind of summary that helps contextualize what you've, what you've just been through. So, or, or there may be topics where you just want that overall high-level picture of what the input was. And so I think that's the benefit of the AI piece, is that it helps to consolidate and summarize that information.
That's very helpful, and I'm tempted to want to continue this conversation, but I'm going to hold off. Thank you very much. I think we can proceed. But I hope we can do some follow-up, Rebecca, Josh.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I apologize, I neglected to put on here that we are seeking some direction, if you're comfortable with that. This was a service proposal for next year's budget that hadn't made a decision on quite yet. And so if you're supportive of funding this project next year, we could put it in the proposed budget that'll come out by the end of the week or early next week. On the other hand, if not, if you need more information, it could always be added to the adopted budget or even later next year.
And are you asking for next year's budget, a one-year financial commitment, or the multi-year financial commitment?
Because this is an ongoing software program, if it were added into next year's budget, we would add it into their target for 2026 and forward, until it was no longer used.
I would be supportive, yes, Commissioner.
I would be supportive. I'm just curious, this has come out of the strategic plan budget, or where would this be? And is there adequate funding for that and other, other, I'm sure there's a lot of other projects that need it, I'm just curious about that.
This would be added out of general fund on an ongoing basis in public affairs, or perhaps in non-departmental, just because it's an enterprise-wide or even in IT. So there is a pot of funding for strategic plan projects every year. It's about $250,000, and so that's kind of for those one-time, unanticipated things, although you could, you know, reduce that by the $47,000 to fund this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm largely supportive. It's hard to say, not, kind of having seen the tool. And because $48,000 is a lot of money, I mean, it's certainly not a full-time employee, but it's, you know, it's on its way to that. So, but, I mean, I'm presuming that there would be enough sort of, I mean, that it would make things more efficient that, and not that it can replace an employee, but just that it would be, help everybody do their job. So, I mean, I guess I'm a tentative yes, if that's, you know, just because I feel like I might need a little more information or want to see, see it before I say yes.
Okay.
So that suggests that perhaps we should schedule the demo sooner than later, you know, in this work session has been suggested.
So we will not put it in the proposed budget, because we basically have to complete that this week, but that doesn't mean it can't be, you know, changed through, until December, so.
And I agree with Commissioner Shadak McNally. I don't remember, in our budget discussions, and forgive me, because we had quite a long one, if this was, I think this was teed up as a possible expense, and I didn't remember how we, what we said about it at that time, so.
Yeah, I can, if you want.
Go ahead.
We did discuss it, discuss it at the retreat last month, and because it was a relatively high amount of money, like you mentioned, and just coming from public affairs, there wasn't a lot of detail on whether it would be used by other departments, and kind of what the specific capabilities would be. And so that's why we asked Michelle, and it ended up being Rebecca to come and just describe the enterprise uses of it, so.
I mean, it seems valuable. I just, I think that if we can add it in later, that might be just a better option, but.
Sounds good. All right. So moving on to objective two, improving accessibility to the county. Our objective team leader, Mackenzie Lau, is here to help answer questions or correct anything, if I'm mistaken here. But thus far, the team has received a state grant to use the Common Look Tool to remediate inaccessible PDF files. They have been documenting processes to show progress and create a tool to respond to accessibility complaints. This is important, should there be complaints, there is documentation that the county is working on it. They received funding from the Information Technology Steering Committee and prioritization to launch an RFP process, to engage a consultant, to remediate problematic files such as blueprints, you know, those huge documents and things like that. They had a request for project funding in the 2025 budget. At the budget retreat, you did give direction to include that. It's $125,000 on a one-time basis for this project. And then prior to the website platform transition, which happened in July, the site was 62% compliant, and afterwards it's 65% compliant, which doesn't seem like a, like a big change, but as I understand it, it's slow, and it's going to be slow and steady progress really throughout. So with that, happy to answer any questions, or Mackenzie can speak more to it, should you so desire.
Thank you, Mackenzie, and Josh and team. I think it's amazing, the work that you're doing, because I know this, I think a lot of people don't understand the heavy lift here. So I'm just curious, I know we had gotten, or at least when I, my CCI Steering Committee had to, not because of something we had said, but someone else had said that we had to write a letter and kind of support, kind of get in that extension. And I'm wondering that, that, when is that extension for everyone? We did this, we kind of advocated for school districts and everyone in the state to have an extension to get, to get up to this new level of compliance that the state has mandated for us all to be at. I'm just curious about that. When's the date that we have to meet?
Gotcha. Excuse me, sorry. So the date is.
Who are you?
So I'm Mackenzie Lau. Lau, so sorry, guys. So I'm the Risk Management ADA Compliance Coordinator for Larimer County. So I'm glad to be here, even though the smoke is really bothering me. But anyway, that date that you're talking about is, it's July 1st of 2025.
So, Mackenzie, thank you, and I'm sorry the smoke's bothering you. I get it, that would be, that's something my mother's, I talked to her today. So I'm curious, with, with this new tool and some of the other things, are you feeling like you have the support and things you need to kind of get to that, to hit that target date? And I'm just curious how it's going, because I don't, I was talking to some other counties where they're taking things off their website, because they don't think they can get to that, and I don't think we want to be less transparent and take things off. So I'm just, I know, we're trying to just get up to that, those requirements. So I'm just curious, how are you feeling supported, and how is it going overall?
So it is a rather large take, undertake, and project, that's for sure. However, I do have a lot of support.
Great.
There's a ton of support that we have, IT, risk, everyone in the county, actually, because it is a county-wide involvement. And so even though I know that percentage looks really like cutting it, like, short, it's not, this changes every day. Like, I looked right before I came down, and it's literally at 70% compliant now, like, because we're continuing to work on these things. And a lot of that compliance has to do with how we're approaching things, how we're tackling things a little at a time, kind of like how, because it is a giant project, and so it's like taking a little bite of everything, makes it a lot more manageable. The hardest part is documenting it, by far. So I'm dealing with these larger things, like blueprints, that are very difficult to make accessible. And there's no technology currently, that I know of, as of today, that can do it. So it's, trying to keep it going is the hardest part. It's like, we may meet that July 1 deadline, but this is an ongoing, permanent project. It's not a one-and-done, by far.
Thank you for sharing that. I think that's a really important point. Maybe that's something that you could share with Josh, kind of the costs for us to think about going, going, and what, so when we talk to our friends at the state legislature, they understand kind of those ongoing costs, maybe we need to add that to our running total, Josh, of unfunded mandates. So, and Mandy, I'm sorry to make you speak when you're, you've got the, Mackenzie, sorry. Sorry, it's, I have a lot of things going on in my head right now, thinking about all this. I appreciate you sharing that, and also just the work that you're doing, because I think it's, it's really important work, and I know that you've been making some great progress. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Good points. Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, my fear is, we're talking a little insider baseball here. I don't know how, that we teed it up, that we are required to make our website accessible, and that this is, there's challenges with that. And we were required by a state statute, or a state bill to be able to do that, that we got an extension on the deadline, but it's to make it accessible to folks who don't, who are visually impaired, I think, and otherwise. And so the challenges have come with, you know, things that are harder to, you know, some things are easier than others to make compliant. And so I don't know if we kind of explained that, and that's why, you know, and unfortunately, it, it sounds easier than it, than it truly is, and I think the state didn't realize the challenges that we would face with regard to this. So I just wanted to kind of make sure that the public understands why we're spending $125,000, because that's a lot of money, but it is required, that we are required to come into compliance, and it is a best practice to make sure that all our community has that accessibility. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have anything to add. I think good points were made, that we should add this to our running list of things that are required of us, that are not backed up by, by the state, and we need to get this done as best as we can. Thanks, colleagues. I believe we can keep going. Thank you, Mackenzie. Hope you feel better. Yeah, the air looks terrible.
Smells terrible, too. So the third objective, maximizing partner relationships. That team has met a few times now, and they are currently working with staff and community partners to determine what programs should be highlighted as part of this objective. The language behind this objective is pretty, pretty high-level and open-ended. They are also working with the Northern Colorado Community Foundation to understand their efforts in the 2024 Intersections work that they do, to identify gaps in best practices that could lead to additional objectives. And that Intersections work is really around a variety of community issues, such as housing, employment, things of that nature. And our Assistant County Manager is the objective team leader for this particular objective. So I don't know if there's anything you want to add, or happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Josh. Is there anything you'd like to add, Lori?
No, I think Josh summarized everything perfectly.
Questions or comments, colleagues? Yes.
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Let's move right along.
Let's do. So the second goal is related to quality of life, and the first objective under that is to promote health and well-being for our community. There are two main sub-objectives under this objective. The first is to create a sequential intercept model, or SIM. The team, a sub-team working on that will be applying to, or I don't know if they already have applied, to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, part of the federal government, for a grant to assist in completing a SIM mapping report and create a plan to address service gaps. And then the Health and Well-Being and Social Support Sub-Objective has team member liaisons working, or there are other groups in the community, such as UC Health, which are working on their Community Health Needs Assessment. And the Larimer County Health Department is working on its Community Health Improvement Plan. And so this team is basically acting as liaisons with those organizations to keep updated on their progress. And then when those efforts are done, perhaps they can continue that work, identify any ways that the county can get involved. And so we do have the goal leader, Emily Humphrey, is here, and also Caitlin Lovett from our Human and Economic Health Department is also part of this sub-objective as well. So if I missed anything, they can add to it or answer any questions.
Thanks, Josh. Any questions or comments, colleagues? I have one, actually. I noticed that one of the assessments, community health assessments or surveys that's done biannually by the Health District of Northern Larimer County. biannually by the Health District of Northern Laramo County is not listed here. I wonder why. And I think they're going to come up with a new survey, an updated assessment in 2025.
I wasn't aware of that one, but perhaps the team can add on to that and I'll let Caitlin address it.
So Caitlin Lovett, I'm a Business Ops Coordinator in Human and Economic Health Services. The reason why that one is not specifically listed is because it's wrapped up in the chip. Joe Buckley in Health and Environment is working really closely with the Health District and they are partnering very closely on what the progress of the Health District is doing with their assessment and aligning it in the chip.
But it is a separate health assessment-
It is, yes.
-that the Health District does.
Yes.
And I just want to make sure because in discussions with the Health District earlier in the year, there was a commitment to include some questions that would see if we, help us better understand the healthcare access needs up in the Red Feather Lakes Glacier View Meadow. And I want to make sure that that, that conversation happens, please.
Will do. I, like I said, the, we're getting the updates and Joe, she will, she's keeping me very closely in tune with what it is they're doing. And so as soon as I have any information about that particular conversation, I'll be sure-
So you'll ask, you'll ask about whether or not the Health District is still committed to including questions that are specific to the Red Feather Lakes area?
Yes, and the Health District does have a team member on this particular sub-objective team, so.
Okay. And I was going to follow up with their director and see if that's still their consideration. Thank you.
So the second objective under quality of life is to support, support an equitable economy. Sorry for the typo there. This objective team has developed a philosophy to have the community help develop these goals, to build on what's currently happening, which is a common theme really throughout this plan, and to aim for some quick wins. So as far, there are two really sub-parts to this particular objective. One is to, to help impact underrepresented businesses, workforce and customers. Thus far, this team has helped with progressive procurement trainings, created a vendor list for small and disadvantaged business owners with an initial focus on food and beverage, doing a review of our procurement policy and processes to see where we can help county funds go to disadvantaged businesses, establish a countywide equitable economy vision statement, and inventorying linguistic resources and gaps. And then on the next slide, the, the next sub-objective, supporting a care workforce. Thus far, the team has reviewed actions from the last strategic plan related to childcare. They're going to be working on building capacity for unlicensed care workforce providers, exploring services for linguistics and cultural competency for this workforce, developing a talent pipeline, and doing policy reform for care professionals, really to be, to make these jobs become quality jobs, sustainable jobs and things like that. So Kelsey Bond from Economic and Workforce Development is here in case I misstated anything or to help answer any questions.
Thank you, Josh. Colleagues, do you have any questions? Yeah, Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I had a question with the progressive procurement trainings. Maybe you can explain a little bit about that. But I mean, is that, is that directed internally or are we helping other people in the community do progressive procurement? And I'm assuming we mean that we'll be exploring, using more vendors that are maybe, you know, companies owned by people of color or, you know, otherwise maybe underrepresented businesses? Is that correct?
Yes, great question. So my name is Kelsey Bond with Economic and Workforce Development. And progressive procurement is terminology that we pulled from, it's a community wealth building philosophy, really powerful documentation that is used both within the United States and globally. And with progressive procurement and the focus on small businesses, we recognize within the state of Colorado that 45% of small businesses are owned by women and over 20% are owned by people of color. And so with that focus, and that's even a higher extreme when it comes to food and beverage. So focusing on that vendor list to really set our, our own P-card holders, our own purchasing power, to really understand and to be set up for success to engage within our underrepresented businesses. This is also paired with what we're calling a Power of the P-card training. And so how are we inviting people to the conversation and to be educated and informed around how we wield that power and how we're leveraging our government dollars to really invest money back into our local economy? Furthermore, within food and beverage, upwards of 80% of the dollar stays when we purchase from a local small business versus a franchise. Upwards of about 30% is what stays within our own community. This conversation has been in the works since this summer. We had the opportunity to have an Impact MBA student from Colorado State University join us in partnership with Laramo County, along with City for Collins, both their Economic Health Office as well as their Diversity Office. They helped us establish what would a purchasing analysis tool look like and what would this training of Power of the P-card look like? Laura Walker also, within leadership of Human, Human and Economic Health, we were able to do this purchasing analysis tool to learn around the narrative and some findings within our own division so we can really help model those best practices that we hope to scale within the county, but then also beyond to other anchor institutions. So thinking other school districts, other government municipalities.
Okay, I love this very much. I think this is great. Will the, like the vendor list, would that be available to like individual P-card? Like so, say I want to go out to lunch or I want to take, you know, a colleague out to lunch or, you know, would we, would we all have access to that? Because I would really love to see that.
Yes, so that is the goal. And our, our goal is to have the vendor list completed by the end of this calendar year as well. And we're also really focusing on understanding where are the barriers? So within that vendor list, maybe what's the capacity for catering order for a small business to, what is it like for them to utilize tax-exempt? We also understand some motivators. This came from a finding of City for Collins administration staff that they would really like to prioritize restaurants that focus on environmental sustainability, right? And so even understanding what are those motivators that we should code within this vendor list, as well as ensuring that we're in congruence with legal processes, that we're not prioritizing organizations, that it's much more of just an educational piece. A stretch goal of this committee is what if we have this vendor list and we have it a part of the required P-card training within our own Laramo County? And what if we even have it be a part of onboarding process for every employee, just to again, be upskilled and informed around the power that we wield?
Yeah, I think, this is great. I love this very much. I think this is, I love the wealth building, you know, piece of it. But I'm wondering with, with looking at the sustainability piece, is that, you know, is there an education piece? So we don't want to penalize somebody like, oh, you know, we like you because you're a minority-owned business, but you're using styrofoam containers still, so we're not going to put you, like you get a ding for that. Instead, how do we sort of help people get to that sustainability piece?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that question. So you can see underneath this component, we also have, I believe it's in there, Business Engagement and Business Trainings. Another piece we found in our initial research is that small businesses sometimes, if you're making a quick order, so within Laramo County, the average order is for 20 people and is a lunch order or a breakfast order. And we found that those who are often making those purchases will lean towards franchise or national companies because they're able to have an online order and it's really easy for the tax-exempt process. So part of our commitment with this as well is how are we leveraging our expertise within economic and workforce development, who are interacting with these businesses on our regular opportunity, to upscale them, to set those resources so that they can easily have that tax-exempt process, so that's no longer a barrier for purchase. We're also in conversation with the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, to better understand what resources they're providing small businesses, to see if this is something that they could take on and leverage their expertise as well.
Great, well, thank you. Thanks for explaining this, yeah. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, this is really exciting. I'm looking forward to getting that list. So I have a couple of questions and, and this is a great partnership. I can see already in my mind kind of maybe all the tentacles, or I wouldn't say tentacles, of the spokes that are, this is really going to be powerful. First, it's very easy, you know, being someone, the only commissioner lives out in corporate Laramo County, but I know there's some small businesses out in, on corporate areas or other parts of the county in the Fort Collins. So is this also going to be able to be helpful for all those, those kinds of businesses that maybe are in those more remote areas that maybe would, that maybe they would love to connect with folks in-
Yeah.
-in the more urban areas? Just curious.
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's a yes and, I will say. And of course, there's always conversations to continue to be held. This list is meant to aim to be inclusive of all of Laramo County, so that goes and expands beyond the urban areas. We also recognize, again, going back to our focus groups with admin and P-card holders, that proximity to meeting location is really important for when it comes to food orders explicitly, so only talking about hospitality here. We also are trying to figure out and build in processes of how can this vendor list be sustained and not just become a point in time, something that we have to worry about keeping updated. So we're working on philosophies of having admin staff and just Laramo County staff help populate and keep this up to date, share insights, maybe experiences with those organizations as well. And then we're also working on, can businesses be the ones to add themselves into this space as well and code them in there? So in that case, it is inclusive of everybody and we also acknowledge the fact that within food and beverage, proximity has become a key indicator of purchasing.
Great. My, one more last thing, back to the older adults, there are a lot of folks who were maybe retiring from, but still need to be in the workforce because of cost of living and they're looking at some of these small businesses, maybe finally their, you know, their favorite apple pie, just for example, I was talking to this woman last night as I was, she asked me to stop by and she wants to do her own like pie-making business, especially with the holidays, right? And so she loves to do that, now she's retired, but she doesn't, she still needs that extra income. So how, is this also something we could do with, you know, youth that are just coming out that want to be entrepreneurs, but also older adults are having a change in kind of careers, but still need, is older adults need to have maybe some income or just maybe not ready to completely retire yet or stop working? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, thank you for that. I feel within the philosophy and conversations that have been held so far, right, age-friendly businesses is definitely something that would be coded on this vendor list, absolutely. Because when we think of adapting the federal definition, minority, women-owned, veteran, age-friendly, right? And so I, all of those components will be classified in here. And when it comes to the, even the youth and the entrepreneurship, right? I think something that we're excited about this group is doing that landscape analysis of what already is happening within county, our own institution and beyond, so we're not being duplicative with our efforts. So hearing that, I'm even saying, how are we connecting them with PAFC and Economic and Workforce Development career rise, right? And then how are we lifting that up to then fall underneath this? So thank you for that.
Excellent, and I'm just super excited to hear about this. Thank you for being here today.
Thanks, colleagues. I have a comment and a question. Kelsey, thank you for your work. I presume that in your, in your outreach, you're also working with the various chambers of commerce, including the Hispanic Chamber, Chambers of Commerce, and is that correct?
So as of right now, we haven't started that business outreach beyond just focus groups, so it is anticipated, but no actions have occurred.
Okay. And then my, my real, perhaps more substantive question, although that's important, building on what I think I heard Commissioner Stevens say about sustainability, are there any components of what you've just described that incentivizes and strengthens our local food systems? Because I think agricultural businesses are often underrepresented and that's a big chunk of our economy. And I know there's some discussions with CSU to update. I mean, one number that's been shared is that 1% of the food that's produced in the county stays in the county, the rest of it goes elsewhere. I think that's increased and we're looking to maybe get better data on that. But I wonder, is there, are there parts of this that are collaborating with our local food systems folks and that we're incentivizing the use of local food that's produced here? Because again, that's, that money stays in the county instead of being exported. Thoughts on that one?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And you're echoing a conversation that we've had with Cary and CSU Extension as well. We did a purchasing analysis of their spending and started to fold into these conversations specifically around agriculture and around food. Something why we're really focusing on food and beverage organizations now is the research shows that those local businesses use local providers. And so more that we, again, inject money into those small businesses, the more likely they are to have those direct B-to-B relationships with the farmers and direct food providers in our region, as opposed to national organizations and franchises. And I think another thing that I appreciate around this conversation is we are by no means trying to say one is better than the other, right? National organizations are still taxpayers, they are still employing local residents. And when we think about just that progressive procurement and the flow of the dollar, there is proof that small restaurants are directly partnering with local farms and local providers as well.
Well, I'd want to, I'd want to confirm that. I, you know, what's, what's the data to support? I mean, obviously there are some local restaurants and retailers that are purchasing food product, produce. But as I said, most of the stuff is that leaves the county. And so it'd be good to get good data, economic data on that.
Yep, absolutely.
And also what the economic impacts are.
Yep, yeah. And the economic data, I think, is a, again, another stretch goal. We do have some information, local, but also just from trends across the United States and the research that has been done from that B-to-B relationship. It would be really powerful to do a case study even around, what does it look like to support small businesses and the impact it has on our local agriculture? I can be sure that we share, Commissioner falls every information that we have so far that informed that. And there is a percentage of the leakage rate that follows that B-to-B food purchasing from local to local. So we do have some of those numbers, but thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, colleagues? Thank you, thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you, Kelsey. I'm very glad you were here. So the final objective under quality of life is improve housing stability. This group is still primarily in the information gathering stage. They are actually monitoring a state effort that is currently underway to inventory services available for individuals who are exiting prison. And so they will see if there's any action that can be taken based on that data. They have gathered information from the Northern Colorado Continuum of Care about resources available for the various categories of individuals experiencing homelessness. As I understand it, they provide many of these services, they are subject to use their funding based on U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development definitions. So for instance, individuals who may be going from friend's house to friend's house, known as couch surfing, may be less eligible because of those federal rules than individuals who are actually identified as living out of doors, I guess. And so they are going to be working with the Northern Colorado Continuum of Care to see if there are flexible sources of funding that they have that could perhaps be used to help those individuals who are in the less serious categories. One other sub-objective here related to services for individuals who are coming out of the correction, the criminal justice system is the work the other team is doing, Goal Two, Objective One, on that sequential intercept model. Should they receive the grants to work on that, then there's an opportunity perhaps that that team would, would do the work related to this or the two teams could collaborate on that. And so I don't think Aleah is here, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to relay them to her.
Thank you, Josh. I'm going to take a breath because this upsets me, what I heard today. We have an opportunity, one since we're opening our youth homeless shelter this winter, fall, really important project near and dear to my heart. Will we be able to look at that a little more in-depth and track that? I, I was at a commie kitchen, you know, they're, they're on track to serve 175,000 meals for folks who are food insecure. And then also they were sharing one elementary school in a municipality, which I won't name. One Title I school has eight families with children living in cars. So how is that, how do we track that? And if we can look at that and how we look at that and how we partner with the school districts and, and how, how can we make sure those youths and those families are getting safe places? So I'm just curious about that and, and if that's a side conversation, but I want to make sure that's maybe part of this area that we're looking at because it sounds like that's just one school- sounds like that's just one school having eight families. Um, that's alarming to me and I'd love to, um, see how we're kind of helping those, you know, those families and how we, um, support them. So just curious about that. I mean, I know, I know you probably don't have those answers, but I'd just like to put a, that in the parking lot and have that followed up. But Laura's behind you raising her finger, so.
Thank you. This is not my goal area, but since Aleah works with me so closely. Um, I'm Laura Walker, sorry, Human and Economic Health Director for the county. And I would say that that issue is really coming through, from a leadership perspective, through the continuum of care and their work with the huge network of providers that participate in the, um, continuum of care's funding, which requires them then to prioritize anybody from, you know, this population, regardless if it's an individual, family, veteran, someone with disabilities, it all goes into the same mixture for people to be prioritized for immediacy of placement when people are in these situations. And so what I'll make sure and do is relay, uh, the concerns that you've been hearing and have Aleah check in with the continuum of care. She's currently the president of their board. Um, and so she will be able to bring this conversation up more to the forefront and find out how the continuum of care is making sure to connect with the school districts directly and then also with that network of providers. But I think that's probably our best approach at this point.
Thank you. And I'm just curious, um, as they look at this, because I do believe, um, some of those families were able to find, um, be housed through the continuum of care, but they had to switch school districts to do so. And so to me, that's, you know, thinking about leaving, you know, those kids leaving their friends and their, their safe places and those relationships and just kind of all of that, just kind of thinking about some of that. So I'm just curious if we could probably put that in the parking lot. I'd just like to ask a few more questions about that, so.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll be sure to relay that concern as well.
Thank you.
Sorry. Moving on to goal three, which is the natural and built environment. The first objective under that goal is to address current and future transportation needs. Um, as you are probably well aware, uh, the Board of County Commissioners placed a, uh, sales tax initiative on the ballot for this coming November 5th. That is for a 0.15% sales tax that would last for 15 years. Um, so once the results of that, um, ballot initiative are through, uh, basically this piece of the sub-objective will be completed. If the initiative passes, it will go into the, uh, capital improvement and, and operating budget for the county in, in the future. And if it does not, then that, that effort will be completed. The second sub-objective is related to, uh, collaborating with municipalities on construction projects. Uh, engineering and community development have initiated a project that will replace the current road events and status system known as RESTs with a system that will enable more real-time information about construction projects and, uh, which could possibly be integrated with municipal and regional partners such as the, uh, State Department of Transportation. Um, that is the update for this particular objective. Our objective team leader, Mark Peterson, is here. Should you have any questions?
Colleagues, do you have any questions? Looks like you're off the hook, Mark.
Moving on to objective two, which is related to developing a sustainable built environment. Uh, many of the, uh, items under this particular objective are related to the climate smart and future-ready, uh, project. There was an update on the progress of that entire plan, excuse me, back on August 26th. There will be another update on that plan on November 18th. Um, some of the highlights are that a technical assistance guide regarding energy use for commercial building owners is under development. They are implementing the electric vehicle charging station plan, uh, specifically regarding business outreach and station construction. And then finally, the electric lawn equipment rebate program for commercial landscapers went into effect just at the end of last month, uh, September of 2024. And so Heidi Pruess, who is the objective team leader for this objective is here. Should you have any questions?
Thank you. Colleagues, questions here? Commissioner Stevens?
Yeah, I just want to, um, make a comment. Um, I know that the electrical, the electric vehicle charging station work, you can come on up, [laughing] is, I, I know that it's, that it's expensive to get, to make this happen. And I will say that at our National Association of Counties, um, transportation meeting, you know, we had someone from the federal government there from, what is, what is their group called? Charge Gov or I don't remember. Now I won't remember what they're, what they're, but they were, you know, seeking input around electric vehicle charging. And I, I did relay the fact that the, um, that the prep work to get this done in so many spaces that haven't been pre, you know, done is very expensive. So they call it, you know, the, it's boring or channeling or whatever you have to do to, to, to get the, um, electric to the space in the, uh, in a parking lot, for example. And so I relayed the expense that we felt like was, was maybe even doubled from what we remember it being. And then also the challenges that rural communities have of making this happen and if, if we can't make it happen in rural areas, especially in Colorado and our, and a colleague of ours from, um, Wyoming spoke up too about that, is that, you know, we're just not going to see people, we're not going to see the adoption. We want to see if people can't recreate in spaces they want to recreate. So maybe you can just speak a little bit to some of the expense and does that, does that, has that delayed our plan and, and what does that look like?
Thank you for the question. Heidi Pruess, Office of Sustainability and Climate. Um, yes, it is true that installation of the electric vehicle charging stations, infrastructure is very expensive. Um, although the cost does vary depending on the location, depending on, um, the accessibility of electricity and, and transformer capacity even at one given site versus the other. Um, the federal government has issued funding sources to supplement what the state is offering and we're actively applying for the funding that we can seek and the partnerships that we can, um, assemble to, to, uh, to bring to the table, the match that's required for that funding. Um, but the long-term goal that is set out by the state in the NEVI plan, which is the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Plan for the state, is quite a large number. And it will take quite a bit more funding and ongoing application in order to install the number of charging stations that get at what you're speaking to.
With the NEVI plan, how much, I mean, is there responsibility at the local level on that or is that state-driven?
It is a state-driven plan with state-driven goals, but our Larimer County Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Plan references that and pulls out what our county contribution would be to help attain the goals that are set out in the overall state plan. So we're identifying what we think our part is without being, having been told, this is your part. Um, so, so that's how they're working together.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that, cause I mean, yeah, it's going to take a lot of, um, work, not only just at the local level, but the state's role, I think, is, is really large in making sure that they help us sort of build that out. Um, anyway, anything else that you ever want me to relate kind of to that group or that person who I can't remember? Charge EV.gov? I don't know. I, I wish I, you know, too many, too many acronyms. Um, but certainly happy to sort of relay the challenges because I think that they really are sort of curious in how they help move this along and maybe they haven't seen the, the applications for some of the grants that they may have thought they might just because of, because it has become quite cost prohibitive. And so, um, anyway, just to be continued, but thanks for the information.
Hi Heidi, thank you for all the work that you're doing. Um, today was my, um, National Association of Counties Rural Action Caucus. And this was a conversation meeting and then it was followed by my, I'm on this, I'm on that caucus, also the Steering Committee for Environment, Energy and Land Use. Um, and there is, um, that was another discussion, cause there's some grants that, um, they're trying to get all of us to apply for. They want, they would love to have 100% of the counties apply for it, but right now only 480 have out of the 3,000. So I'm going to forward you some of these, this program, cause the deadline's in the month, but just in case there's something in there that we can look at. Um, there's, it's, um, there's a lot of eligible activities. Um, I think it's, uh, the, uh, what is the name of this? It's the, there's also grouche, um, grants and vouchers, but it's the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. But there, um, all these, there's 14 and the word flexible and eligible uses, and they kept stressing flexible. I know. But, um, I just thought we, it might be something, but it, it does seem like there's some things in there that are, um, not competitive, they called it. So I just wanted to kind of forward that to you, cause we were having those conversations and, um, there are some, you know, counties that were, we're talking about some of these conversations, like the, you want us to do all these things, but it costs and we need the help. And so I'm, I'm going to forward you some of those screenshots I took from that meeting today. I'm sure I'm going to get the slide deck, but I figured the screenshots were quicker to send to you today. But I'm just curious, um, have we, um, I'm sure you have, knowing how diligent you are, but the National Association of Counties, have we, um, combed through all of those opportunities, especially some of these, um, things that they talked about today? Cause some of these were like, say what? So, um, yeah.
Yes. Um, thank you for continuing to send information to me. Please send those, those links to me. I don't think there's a day that goes by that I don't look through the availability of all the grants, um, and trying to match them with the correct pro, partners that we already have working on some of these items as well as supplementing what it is that we're seeking. But, um, it's quite possible something slips through, so please do send those on to me.
And just a heads up, I don't know who I'm going to need to talk to, but, um, there is, I don't know who to put the pen in, but just since we're on the topic of my meeting today, um, there is a new final lead and copper rule, um, from the NACO, and NACO's very concerned about, there's a 10-year compliance timeline, but there's some costs that, um, they think, um, from the EPA, just, just kind of put that in everyone's radar. There's a new ruling and guidance that came down, so that might be something that we have to, I don't know whether our role is, but just something they wanted us all to be aware of. So thank you.
Thank you for forwarding those. And, um, while I have the opportunity with you just now, the last bullet item that is on this slide around the electric lawn equipment commercial program, you should know that we have a good problem. And that is that this was so popular that the application window has already sunsetted for the amount of funds that were available for this year. We have a waiting list. We have a waiting list of over 30, um, contractors, of which we're only going to be able to let, uh, awards to about six or seven of them. So know that this is an identified need in our community and that we'll be continuing to circle back and see what it is that we can do next, um, with regard to the need in the community. But that's a good problem to have, that we're going to have some great implementation through that program.
Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, Heidi. The final objective for goal three, uh, to develop a sustainable natural environment. This objective has several, uh, sub-objectives related to water quality, uh, soil health, uh, things of that nature. Uh, this team has really, uh, spent the year thus far tracking current and planned actions across all of these sub-objectives. Megan Flanagan in our Natural Resources Department is the objective team lead for this. She's not able to make it today, but she's shared with me a list of about 20 items across all of these sub-objectives that, uh, the, the team has been working on and really inventoried. Uh, they've completed the identification of roles, metrics, timelines and status of actions, uh, in that, uh, in that inventory of, of things that she identified. Uh, also they've completed phase two legislative rezoning of conserved lands and priority land con, conservation landscapes into natural resources zone, with the inclusion of state and federal conserved lands into the natural resources zone. If you have any questions about that, I will be happy to go back and ask Megan what all of that means. Um, integrated wildlife resilient best practices into the land use code, uh, during the 2022 update. Moving forward, uh, education on these practices will be the focus of this team. Um, and so if you have any questions or anything you would like me to relay, uh, to that team, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Today we're talking about our water master plan and also there's some new state, um, legislation with the waters of the U.S. that, uh, was passed successfully, but not fully successfully. I'm wondering how that, with that focusing on, um, stream health and river health and things, I'm, I'm hoping that we're kind of, uh, I'm seeing Director Ellis now to our head, but I'm hoping that we're kind of combining that information and the watershed and forest health information into all of this as well. Cause I know we're working on a 30-year, um, forest, um, health, um, plan for the state and I'm curious, I'm just hoping that we'll all, I'm, I'll come into that as well. Just curious about that.
I will ask, do you know? Sorry.
Hi, Leslie Ellis, Community Planning, Infrastructure and Resources Director. So I'm just making note of that and I'll loop back with Megan and with Danielle and some of the others who are working on these efforts. But yes, we're definitely aware of those, um, efforts and we'll make sure that they get noted as part of some of these other projects that we're working on as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes, maybe stay up there, just, uh, and, uh, just, um, so we did the legislative rezoning and that was, um, you know, kind of, uh, state and federal conserved lands and, and other conserved lands. There, um, was, was there any other piece to that? Was there, uh, the ability for people to get other lands that we weren't aware of or, um, for people to opt in or were there other lands we wanted to preserve with that tool, uh, non-legislatively, like, I don't know?
Um, from a conservation standpoint, the natural resources piece was really important and a first step in the rezoning, as you're aware. Um, there is a step going forward that looks more at agricultural lands and some of the other zoning districts and, you know, not directly related to some of these objectives, but I think there may be benefits, um, from a land, you know, ranching, farming standpoint and the ability to continue those practices. Um, so not necessarily directly related to this, but, um, definitely tied to that rezoning legislative process.
Right. And, um, and like the, for example, the mobile home park
Yeah.
rezoning that we could do, um, where we were potentially going to do that legislatively as well, could be an element to, you know, a housing strategic plan, for example?
Yes. Um, and I believe that's on an upcoming work sessions tonight, yes.
It is.
So, um, so there'll be some opportunities to discuss how that project is progressing and what you'd like to see as part of, um, part of that rezoning proposal.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So the final goal is county operations, which is really internal facing. The first objective team is working on optimizing county processes and systems. Uh, one sub-objective, uh, team is related to, uh, ensuring that the allocation of resources for support services. Uh, support services are those, um, services provided to other county departments so that they may, uh, then provide services to the public. So an example would be information technology facilities, county attorney, things like that. Uh, at July, department heads, the team presented on how the indirect cost model works. The indirect cost model, uh, basically allocates costs to departments that get grants or charge fees for their share of support services, which would otherwise be supported entirely by the general fund. Uh, there was a lot of, uh, confusion, I think, and, um, misinformation about the purpose of that model and how it worked. And so at department heads, we walked through that and were able to educate everyone on how it works. And currently the team is hosting focus groups, both of customers and of support services departments. The focus group for, um, uh, staff from support services departments met, I think it was last week, and the facilitation team helped identify some key themes that we see as, uh, support services providers. And then there will be a second focus group of customer departments, so they can provide feedback on what they see as far as how support services operate. The team working on key, developing key performance measures is looking at a framework that was developed by Colorado State University Extension to develop their performance measures. And so rather than reinventing the wheel, they're going to see if that, uh, framework works for them in developing these, uh, KPIs, key performance indicators. Continuing on this objective, uh, the security team, uh, is, is reviewing policies. There's one sub-objective relating to, uh, improving and enhancing security in all really facets of our operations, from cybersecurity to physical security. Um, they are reviewing policies related to security. Uh, they've taken some of their initial ideas to the Strategic Leadership Committee to get, uh, feedback on possible changes at the September meeting. And so, uh, those efforts are ongoing. And then the team that is helping us develop a policy, um, and education related to artificial intelligence is continuing to develop that. to develop that policy. It has been presented to the Equity Diversity and Inclusion, or DEI, board, and they are creating a user guide for county staff, including best practices, opting out of data collection, how to cite, and copyright concerns related to artificial intelligence. So the objective team leader, Julie Elser, is here, as is Greg Turnbull, who has been working on the artificial intelligence efforts. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on this one.
Colleagues, Commissioner?
Yeah. Forgot where it was today. I was on something else, and I realized it was AI that was answering my questions. And so it kind of gave me pause, but also was kind of exciting. I'm curious, you know, this Commissioner Stevens and I, like, two years ago, were at a conference in in the U.S. Capitol that was really pushing on for local governments, look at this and have some policies. And it's a very broad and ever-changing daily topic. And I'm curious where we're at with the policy. And are we are we being proactive here? Are we are being reactive? Where are we at compared to other areas? And is it something that needs a little more urgency to kind of get a policy in place that we will probably continue to tweak because it is an ever-growing, changing area, as I watch now that I have something on my phone that will help me write a text message so that I didn't have before on my phone? So I'm just curious. So.
So Greg Turnbull, Director of Innovations and Insights. You're absolutely correct. It's omnipresent. AI is, it's being added to most of the tools, both on our phones or the tools we use day to day. Gmail, we're piloting Gemini, which is their artificial intelligence. So we are absolutely, I think we're relatively ahead as far as our policy. Not only, we're not just taking a template or something that's out there, but we're really making it Blair County-driven, tying it to the guiding principles. We're part of a coalition, it's Government Gov AI Coalition. It's 400-plus agencies across the country. We were part of the original group that worked on the AI policy templates. But the one that we're focusing on right now is specifically for the generative AI policy and how our staff leverage or use generative AI in day-to-day use. A lot of that is, we talked about a guidelines or a instruction manual almost on what you should or shouldn't do, things you should be mindful of. We talked about bias, copyright material, things to be careful of when using generative AI. As far as a bigger policy, there's also AI concerns when we have decision, not just decision-making systems, but even things that guide us in the decisions we make day to day. We lean on AI to help us. We could decide who gets certain benefits, or who, you know, things that have to do with recidivism. And we're not doing that. We right now, we're leaning on these systems to help inform us. But there is always the danger present that we could let it go too far. So you're absolutely right. Right now, we have two two major policies that we're looking at, the first one being that generative one.
Could you repeat again which national group we're a part of, the 400-plus agencies?
Sure. It's the Gov AI Coalition. It was originated in San Jose, California, the city of San Jose. And we've been grouped with, we've been members of that coalition since November of last year.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm sure this is something that I'll probably be asking questions off and on, but thank you for that. And I'm glad we're part of some other groups and learning from others. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner? Thank you, Greg.
So the second objective is to collaborate and coordinate with partners and stakeholders. One of the sub-objectives is to increase revenue through grant opportunities. One of the sub-objective teams for this met with Jefferson County, who provided a presentation on how they administer and go after grant opportunities. Throughout the year, we will be evaluating the idea of having an internal grants team versus the current state of having two contracted grant writers. You may remember, I think, just over a month ago, the county entered into a contract with one firm that can help us see grants, apply for them, also develop a strategy or roadmap for which grants we should focus on. That will be on a retainer so we can use them basically as needed. And then, I'm sorry, use them for up to nine or 10 opportunities. And then there's a second firm that we will be utilizing on an as-needed basis, perhaps primarily for large infrastructure projects. Expanding equitable access to county services, this team is, has been working on some of the initial stages, such as defining access, co-location, partner locations, and is going to receive a report out from departments that have co-locations. So a very initial stage is there. And then one other sub-objective is the facilities master plan. As you are probably aware, the update to the plan that was adopted back in 2018 is in process. On November 6, there will be a workshop with the consultant who's putting this together. They're basically going to walk through all the information that they've collected thus far and walk through some alternatives to be considered for future workspace needs. So that is currently in process. So that is it for that objective. And if you have any questions, be happy to help.
I don't have a question particularly, but but I wanted to say that, you know, with the expanding equitable access to county services, I mean, we just got that notice that we got the grant for the, I guess, a van to be able to go out and do food assistance. So that that feels like, I don't know if that was, that was not necessarily particularly tied, but that is, that's a really good outcome. And I think that that's the kind of thing that we're looking at. So potentially, not even just co-location, but how do we take it, how do we take the show on the road, you know? And, you know, we looked, we, I mean, obviously, departments helped it a little bit of that during COVID with vaccinations and stuff like that. But is there, I mean, maybe, you know, maybe there's ways to partner there, too. I think about vaccinations being a little bit lower than we want them to. There was just a report on that. And so so I think that there's lots of opportunities here, and I'm excited about that. And and there again, I think that there's, we can definitely partner with groups that are going into mobile home parks on a regular basis, like Food Bank and others who are, and I'm sure we already do a lot of that anyway. But I just think that there's a lot of possibilities here to really, and then, you know, honestly, I mean, when we talk about engaging with members of the public that we don't engage a lot with, I mean, that's, are there opportunities for engagement as we do some of that work? So thank you.
I would just offer, as an example of another potential opportunity, and maybe you could speak to this, but our potential collaboration with the Wellington Community Services Center, I think we have a meeting next week to kind of talk about where they're at in the process. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, Kate.
Thank you, Commissioner. Lori Metz, Division Manager, Human Services. I will write that down. And I look forward to seeing what that comes of in Wellington. That would be a great opportunity. And to your point, Commissioner Stevens, we're very excited in human services about the opportunity through the SNAP grant to take services out into the community and then being able to see where we can go from there. I think the biggest piece for us right now in this group is defining access. There's co-location, where we actually have county staff in community agencies. We have partnering, where we have office hours, maybe, in different community locations. And then there's training of those community partners. A great partnership that has evolved from that lens is that Pooter School District's navigators have now become efficient in completing SNAP applications for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. So while they were excited to partner with us, they also said, please train our staff, and then we can do that piece. So there's a continuum when it comes to access. So I think finding where that falls best for those individual communities is the next step.
Yeah, thank you. And I think about some of the conversations we had. I went up with Extension to Redfeather Lakes, and we had some really good conversations. And, you know, of course, some of this work kind of overlaps in a way or is complementary to each other. And I certainly think the work that Extension does falls under that that bucket. And, you know, they had some conversations about, you know, programming up, you know, in Redfeather Lakes and what facilities to use and things like that. So I do think Extension is a great also, you know, partner in some of this work, too, of, you know, because they have, they have a wide reach as well. And so I think that there's some exciting possibilities here. So I'm looking forward to seeing what you do. Thank you.
I agree. There's some great possibilities. And when you talk about co-location, I know we already have some partnerships. And I'm thinking about areas outside and more different locations, other than the bigger urban areas. So, you know, Community Kitchen and Meals on Wheels in Loveland co-locate and use the same kitchen. And that's an obviously an important location. And I know, like I said, they're on track for over 175,000 meals and 1,200 unique individuals. That's, that's a huge increase. And a lot of them are mostly families. So but there's a lot of older adults as well. So I'm very interested in this and see how we progress and how we can kind of help connect people where they're at. And I know we have some different locations up in Estes Park. We have the three different, there's a, there's a church kind of location, there's the senior center, and there's also some other areas. So I'm not sure how we all connect with all of those, because it's hard to be all those three places, and how we can kind of unite those areas to kind of help them share the resources. So I'm just curious, what are your thoughts about that? And I just reached out, I reached out by a group in Bertha that I'm going to go speak to that is kind of the, used to be the senior adults. They're meeting in a different place, but they just, I think they just lost their coordinator or something two weeks ago. So I'm just curious about that as well, and how we can connect those areas that keep getting, I want to say displaced, but they keep changing locations and, you know, especially older adults get used to kind of going to the same place. So you hear what I'm saying. I'm just just trying to understand, how do we, how, if those keep changing, how do we, how do we co-locate, but also just how do we keep up with some of of these organizations that are having to change locations sometimes due to things out of their control?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. You know, I think a big part of what this group will be looking at is honoring and respecting what those communities have already built on their own. We're not the experts in those communities. They are. You know, we had the opportunity through the Office on Aging, through Human Services, to have CSU School of Social Work Research Center do a large needs assessment for those rural communities and a separate one for the Latinx community, because we are not the experts as to what these communities need and how they want to receive their outreach. And so I think that that information will absolutely be informing this group. And you all, as commissioners, will be hearing all about that in December at our Board of Social Services. So more to come on that piece. So it is tricky with these smaller community agencies and nonprofits, because they are moved around or displaced, in your words, of where they can be. So continuing to just have those relationships, and I think building off of those is is the most important piece.
Thank you. And I appreciate all the work you're doing. And yes, thanks for reminding me of that study. I know that CSU student is super, super excited about that work, and I look forward to continuing to learn more. Thank you.
Thanks, Lori.
So moving on to our final objective under county operations is to support and develop leadership. This includes developing effective leadership through critical skills training and experience, developing a leadership culture of equity, diversity, inclusion, and belonging, and finally, recruiting and retaining people of color and diversity into leadership positions. So this team is currently working on developing an employee survey that will assess the current leadership development effort, identify strategies for leadership development, and understand the current culture of EDIB opportunities in leadership. And the timeline to basically issue this survey is either December of 2024 or perhaps into January of next year. Once this survey is completed, they will then identify and research leadership development strategies, including a leadership skills training program, a formal mentoring program, which seems to have generated quite a bit of interest, innovation, a process improvement program, and then finally, human resources promotion and employee evaluation improvements. And our objective team leader, Gordon Coombs, from Human Services, is here. Should you have any questions?
Just a comment, and maybe this would be helpful for Gordon and the team. And Kelsey's still here, so she can help. So at the Workforce Symposium, Dr. Rich Feller was the keynote speaker, and he did a really excellent presentation around identifying the genius within us. And it seems to me it ties in well with leadership development. And I know in some informal conversations with Mark Johnston, we've talked about how can we maybe bring this, you know, into either into HR or into some of our leadership development. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And if you think that's something useful, I or Kelsey or somebody could send you the slides so you could take a look at it.
Absolutely. Gordon Coombs, Division Manager, Human Services. Absolutely. All the resources that are out there to help improve and develop this out would be appreciated.
And I believe tomorrow, Thursday, there's a follow-up Zoom meeting that Dr. Feller, Rich Feller, is going to be presenting at. And we have the information for that. I think I have that as well. I can, I can send that or between Kelsey and I, just so you're aware, and then you can consider how that might be relevant to what you're doing in this leadership development component.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Gordon. Anything else, colleagues, questions for Gordon? Yes, yes.
I just really, I really like this, you know, the work that we're doing. I feel like, you know, this goes to not only kind of retaining people, keeping people happy in their job, and for them to see like a movement, you know, where their career could go. I think that 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 piece is really important. So and especially that we're, you know, applying a equity lens to that is really valuable, because we want to see, you know, people of color advance and in our organization and really have that, set that example. And so I'm very supportive of this and look forward to hearing more.
Thank you.
Anything? You're good? Thanks, Gordon.
So that completes the update on all of the objectives and sub-objectives. Just some other updates on the plan overall. The third bullet, I probably should have put at the top because that generated the other two. Back in August, I presented on the strategic plan to the Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion or JDI Coalition. That meeting was very productive, as they helped me to translate the the plan document that's on the website into Spanish. And so I engaged a company to make sure that that was translated accurately, and that's now available on our website. The plan documents were also made accessible using tools in Adobe Acrobat and Microsoft PowerPoint, as well as the site on which it's hosted called Flipbook. So that's how you see it on our on our website. Also, they provided some great feedback in that the colors in the document were not always easy to read, basically. And so that's why the plan has now changed that document. The colors were changed to make it much more readable. So I appreciated that feedback. And then finally, we are now ready to unveil the project, or to utilize the project management software that will enable us to unveil the online dashboards that will show progress towards these objectives. And so on the next slide, while it's somewhat small, basically, this is very easy for all of our objective team leaders to use, our goal leaders. I will also be assisting them where necessary. But down in the green table, they can add kind of the the main deliverables under each objective and sub-objective, some of the main things related to making progress, such as completing a survey of employees on the topics that we discussed with Gordon. And then that will show the start date and end date of those items and basically the progress for each objective. So there will be one dashboard for each objective. So a total of about 12 dashboards showing the the items that are either in process or have been completed. These are nice and graphical, easy to read. Again, they're small here, but they're big on the website, so that really we can, we can show progress for the public. And so we're very excited about that. There are other dashboards we can use to show the progress towards the entire goal, such as quality of life. So after today, those will be available on the strategic plan website. And that brings us to the conclusion of the presentation, and happy to answer any questions or take any feedback.
Thanks. Yes, Commissioner?
First, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say thank you, Josh. Thank you to everyone. This is a lot. This is a lot of great work already. When I think back to that Community Leaders Summit and the conversations we have, and to see this dashboard and some of these, this progress is really just outstanding and really heartening, and I'm excited to hear about this. Thank you all for your engagement. I'm really glad we're engaging folks, some community leaders outside the county to come join, and I really think that's been valuable, and I hope that you all have felt that, too. First, just major kudos and gratitude. This is great work. My question is kind of threefold, one question. There's some really big things in here that will really advance some of our priorities or visions or values going out into the county. So, first, how are employees and team leads and the public or the people that we're engaging? So, how is there, how are they receiving this? Are they excited? Is this kind of like, oh, we have to do, we have to do something again or more things? So, is the energy, do you have enough capacity, time, funding, resources? Because this is huge work. This is stuff that we haven't seen before. So, I'm just curious what overall is, what's the temperature? What's the climate? How's it going?
Yeah, and first of all, I really should have mentioned that really all the hard work is being done by everyone here in the room with me and those who couldn't make it. I'm really just kind of coordinating and sort of bringing all the information together and asking if they need help. So, it's really, everyone else here has done all of that hard work. I would say like any big plan like this, it's initially been, well, where do we start? Maybe a little frustration that it's not clear, the path forward, you know, are we doing the right thing or are we not making enough progress? And I like to tell them, you know, it's natural to start this way, to not be quite sure where to go, but the work that they're doing, I think, will lead them to do great things. And that's one of the great things about this plan, some of the lessons we learned in the past, is that instead of giving them a very specific thing in which they had no input in creating and which may not be achievable, now we're leaving it really wide open and letting them develop it. So, I think they're excited to be able to take things in their own direction and, you know, bring proposals and ideas and then hopefully receive that direction to continue. So, I mean, sometimes it's hard because this is other duties as assigned. Relying on folks from the outside adds a wrinkle to scheduling because, you know, bringing that many people together can be difficult. And so, you know, some teams with a lot of external members have only met a couple times because it's summer and people aren't available. So, I would say, at least as far as I can tell, and I really appreciate, the energy has been really positive, so.
Thank you. Appreciate all the work.
Yeah, I'll just add my thanks, and I think this is great work. There's a lot of progress that's been made, and like you said, there's other spaces where, you know, we're maybe less progress has been made, but there might be more thought around, you know, how do we, because some of the goals are sort of big and not navigable until you sort of break them up into pieces and really figure out what you want to do. So, I'm supportive of, you know, everything that's being done, you know, regardless of the stage that it's at. Some things are further along and other things, you know, are just forming, and that's why we have five years to do this because we don't expect it to all get done in the first, you know, nine months or whatever. So, we're not making one baby. There's lots of babies being made here, so. But I, yeah, I'm very impressed by the work. I'm really happy. I'm really happy with the community engagement and, you know, I like what I hear. So, I, you know, we're happy to provide further input, but I certainly think it's going in a direction that I appreciate and that I support.
Echo the comments, and thank you for all the hard work. Question I have is, and this is based on some feedback that I received recently. Couple of years back, I was involved with the CSU, and they were developing through Extension and Communications Department what they called the Civic Capacity Index. And recently, Dr. David McPhee emailed me saying they were doing a survey to kind of get a sense of where community groups and sectors, where they were at during the pandemic and how they, you know, recovered since that time. And one of the comments that somebody who was filling out the survey said it was about the county, saying that really didn't feel like that person could answer the questions in an informed way because they didn't really know all the good things that the county's doing. So, and I did share that with Michelle and Jordan, so they're aware of that, and I think it was helpful input. But I guess related to my question in this last, the data dashboards slide, how are we going to inform people that this information is available, especially marginalized groups that may not make it a habit to check out our county websites or, you know, perhaps people with disabilities that might have other, you know, barriers as well?
Yeah, so that will be part of the communications plan that the Goal One, Objective One team under Michelle Byrd are developing right now. So, we will be sharing this information out through various channels, through to various populations within our community. I've also told or asked Michelle and Jordan if they have groups that are hosting meetings and they'd like me to come and present on this. The JEDI Coalition was a great beginning to that. I just flipped back to this as well because I neglected to mention the JEDI Coalition had a great idea, too, about really documenting which teams have members of the public and who can look at each objective through an equity lens. And so, many of our teams have that, or they're at least putting their products through our EDI board. So, we'll be working on making that much more clear as well. And then auditing the plan really as we go to determine where there might be overlap and things that we actually accomplish. There are a couple of objectives that we're realizing are pretty similar now, and so it could very well be the case that in a year or two, we decide, we come back to you and request to, you know, combine them or change them. As I've mentioned before, it's a living, breathing document. So, yeah, that's all to be developed, and we'll be reporting on that later.
Thank you, Josh. That's helpful. I would just simply add that, and I'm sure this is what's being considered, you know, an initial marketing or outreach, that's well and good, but I think there needs to be intentionality and some ongoing effort to remind us, by the way, we have all this good information. These are some of the successful things we've done. I mean, we have all these great dashboards, and I don't know about my colleagues, but I forget that they're out there and that periodically would be helpful to, you know, refer to them. So, I hope we're building in some sustainability or some regularity and really targeting that outreach to groups, especially groups that might be a bit more marginalized.
Will do. Thank you.
Of course. Lori, do you have any closing comments, questions, observations?
Just one comment.
Please.
Josh's work with the JEDI Coalition was so good that the JEDI Coalition wants to track the progress of the strategic plan on a regular basis and provide input. And so, what Josh and I have talked about is after these quarterly updates by the commissioners to ensure that we're aligned with our board, then he would go back to the JEDI Coalition, provide them the new information, and then they can provide us feedback. And that group is pretty large and pretty diverse. And so, this is, I think, just a great opportunity for us to work with the community on the strategic plan in real time that we haven't had before.
Thanks, Lori. And if I may, just an afterthought question that came up based on your comments and didn't get a chance to ask Greg this, but with, I think we were running a lot of our AI policies through our EDI board, Equity, Diversity, Inclusion, and I'm curious, other than they are, want to make sure there's not bias or implicit bias, were there other takeaways that we've learned either from perhaps from JEDI or from EDI, you know, regarding things that we need to be mindful of or careful about regarding groups and AI? Can we bring him back?
So, just in the conversation, Lori was in with me, and I think you were on the phone, but we had a great conversation, and we're starting a dialogue, and we're kind of playing through Lori and Jordan, passing information back and forth. And I've already received some great feedback from the EDI board. And it wasn't just tailored to bias, but also how do we identify who's responsible for making sure that we are using the generated content that this AI is doing, that it's not either biased or that we've made sure we're not using copyrighted material or that we're, you know, turning out content on the behalf of Larimer County that might be problematic. So, again, it was great to have that conversation, and I'd love to, you know, with the JEDI Coalition, potentially pass on articles to them to have them take a look as well. I know it's a big group, and some of it is, it comes down to how do we throw it out there, get all the comments, and gather it back and make it useful? But we were able to do that with at least our EDI board. And Lori may have more information or comments or not.
No, thank you, Greg. I just want to emphasize how important that is. Yeah. Oh, yes.
Since this sounds like this feedback was really tremendous, I'd love to give a summary of that or discuss that offline and learn more about the feedback and the conversation that you had. Thank you.
Great. Anything else, colleagues? Josh, anything else?
No, sir.
Once again, thanks to all the folks assembled and who were here earlier and people watching, listening. At 3:15 PM, we are adjourned.